Can we have our roll call?
Yes, Director DeDina.
DeDina President.
Director Baber. Director Montgomery Stuff.
Here.
Vice Chair Padilla.
Here.
Chair Mosca.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Do we have any public comments on our closed session items?
No, not at this point.
All right, so we have one item on our closed session as a conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9 D1 name California Public Utilities Commission Resource Adequacy proceeding. So then I guess our legal counsel will take us into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be switching over to the other link.
All right, perfect. Does everybody have a link for closed session? Perfect, all right. And then we'll keep this Zoom going and then we'll come back to it. Perfect.
Hey Cody, they just went to the closed session.
What kind of things do we hear on this?
There you have it. John, panel meeting. Five, one, eight, two, three, four, five.
[Music]
Okay, so I need to go with my call.
We're in the right call, right Laura? Okay.
I think so.
Yeah, you're in the right spot now.
Okay.
The closed session's over, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this the link for the main meeting or is this the one?
Yeah, this is the main meeting.
So confusing.
Hey, everybody. I know, we always make it as easy as possible, right Serge?
You're always messing with me, that's it.
So there's a, there's an email, Kimberly, let's make sure that if Serge has an assistant that we're getting his assistant, the link that shows the public facing and the.
We do, just, you know, no one was on the link when I did it, so, you know.
All right.
Because you're trying to mess with me, that's all. I know Steve is trying to mess with me, so it's fine.
And we'll look into other ways to do that through Zoom, a Zoom room, so the next time it's not so complicated.
Let's keep on changing it up so we can just utterly confuse him.
I think that's a great idea.
You understand, Steve's in the Highlands, he's in the Altiplano of Chula Vista. Highland maces. Folks, they completely look down on us, like they. Highlands of Chula Vista people, like they, they were like, yeah, and they're always trying to mess with us too.
Be, be like that, hermanito, be like that. Be like that. I go, I'm already, I'm like, I am literally on the eastern border of like nowhere, like. The Olympic Training Center, I'm next to Upper Otag. Is it I feel?
All right.
Hey, I'm in Serge's town a lot, I love I B.
All right, so let's, let's come back into open session. Ryan, do we need to, do we need to do a roll call again since we did, we were open before?
No, let me go ahead and do the report out if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
That sounds good, thank you.
Great, thank you. The report out from closed session is that the board voted unanimously to authorize staff to file an appeal with the California Public Utilities Commission regarding a citation the authority received over violations of the resource. The motion by Dina, a second by Director Baber and all directors voting in support unanimously. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Megan, let's just do a roll call please, because I think the, the attendance may have been different in the beginning.
Okay, Director De Dina.
Present.
Director Baber. Director Montgomery Step.
Here.
Vice Chair Padilla.
Vicente.
Chair Moscow.
Here, and I apologize for saying Megan instead of Kimberly.
Kimberly, I'm here, you got me?
Um, yes, I do now.
Thanks.
All right, Kimberly, do we have any public comments on the, on non agenda items? All right, well, let's go to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting and regular meeting of the Board of Directors of San Diego Community Power, held on January fifteenth and January twenty eighth. Oh, sure.
My, my apologies, we, we did change the public comment process for, given the feedback that we received last month, and so for items, for non agenda public comment, members of the, of the community can raise their hand virtually and we can entertain them if they wish to speak. Apologies for, for not mentioning.
All right. Yeah, no problem. So I'll go back to that, that item, I'll go slower. Is there anybody that is watching this meeting, though we have not received any request to speak? Or is there anybody watching this meeting right now that would like to speak during this period, which is a public comment period for items that are not on our agenda? All right, I don't see anybody raising their hand, and Kimberly, we didn't receive any request to speak.
We did not.
All right, all right, so I'm going to go to the consent items, which is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting and regular meeting of the Board of Directors of San Diego Community Power, held on January fifteenth and January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty one, and also the treasurer's report. If there aren't any questions on those two items, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the items, Chair, this is Director Montgomery Step.
We have a motion.
Mr. Baber will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, Board Member Montgomery Step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member De Dina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, so we have a short agenda today, and so let's go to our regular agenda, which is item number three and four. Operate, item number three is Operations and Administration Report from our interim executive, Chief Executive Officer Bill Carnahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, we would like to flip flop the two and let Ty give his regulatory report first, and then the discussion that, that we're going to have during my report is, is more open ended, and I think it'll fit better if we can get his and then we can, we can have more flexibility in the second one.
Sounds good. All right, Ty, Ty, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moscow. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, somebody's got it for me, okay. Sebastian, are you operating that?
Yes, I am.
All right, can you, can you go ahead in advance? Thank you. Today, a few things on our agenda. Most importantly, we have received the advice letter implementing SDGNE's rate changes from the ERA forecast and the ERA trigger application proceedings. These are the proceedings where SDGNE sets its, its commodity rates or power rates each year, and, you know, very important for us, the PCIA rates are also set here. Also want to talk to you about a new proceeding that's been issued around customer debt and a related SDGNE proceeding, and then just to touch on RPS procurement plans. So if you would, Sebastian, please go ahead. We've been talking about the ERA forecast and the ERA trigger applications quite a bit over the past four or five months. Quite a battle was waged at the Public Utilities Commission against SDGNE's rate proposals. They had proposed to exclude taking into account departing load in their rate formulas, and we put forward a quite a campaign with our ERA Council, Keys and Fox, and our consultants at NewGen. We, we were able to persuade the commission to, that SDGNE needed to take departing load into account, and so the decisions went our way. The, we are still, the, the advice letter implementing these rate decisions was issued just a couple of days ago, and we're still in the process of verifying the amounts, but based on our review so far, the rates that we're anticipating for adoption and beginning in March are in line with the estimates that you've all been provided previously. So, in other words, there's going to be no drastic reduction in SDGNE's rates as they had originally proposed. They had proposed a thirteen percent reduction in, in, in the system average rates, and that will not occur. In fact, their rates will be increasing. Stay tuned for more details on that, but that is certainly a positive development, and we're very glad to report that outcome here. So I'm just gonna, that's been such a focus, I want to pause for a moment and see if there are any questions about that. Again, we're, we're in the process of taking a close look at the rates, and we'll get some comparisons out to, to you all shortly here. Any questions about the ERA at this point?
Okay, I see any hands raised, feel free to shout out if you have a question. All right, doesn't look like we.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moscow. Sebastian, if you would, advance the slides one more. There, there is a new proceeding related to customer build debt. The, as everybody knows, the COVID pandemic has taken its toll on the personal finances of, of customers all over the state and the country and the world, for that matter. We have not been as severely impacted in the energy industry as, as other industries have been. We've been fortunate in that regard, but the economic outfall from, from the COVID pandemic is certainly accumulating, and it's, it is certainly showing up in customer debt that's owed to the, to the utilities and CCA programs for the same, by the same token. And so there are some pretty eye popping figures. There was an increase of six hundred and fifty million dollars last year in California in, in customer debt owed to utilities. So there's now over a billion dollars of customer debt outstanding. That's a very substantial increase. We saw very substantial increases also in the low income customer programs. And so this, this rulemaking that's been launched is going to take a closer look. It follows some other measures designed to protect customers from disconnection and protect customers who are at risk of disconnection. And so those efforts will certainly inform what's happening in this proceeding. But this is one that we want to watch very closely. CalCCA, our statewide trade organization, is active on, on this proceeding, and so our primary means of engagement here will be to work with CalCCA on, on this issue, on this proceeding and the issues that arise. But I, I do want to stress that these are, are very large numbers. One of the things that has happened with these previous measures is that there has been effectively a subsidy that's been provided through rates for, from customers who are in a position to, to pay their bills and, and to pay into the public purpose program charge, and there is a process that's been worked out in these, with the previous effort that does compensate CCA programs for some of the losses they may incur. We need to make sure that a similar process is followed and that, that, that process is structured in such a way that provides a financial support for, for the program. So we'll be working closely with CalCCA on this issue, but I do, I want to make sure that everyone here is loud and clear that there, there may be some, that, that certainly customers are, you know, having some hard times and that there may be impacts to the program down the road. So we'll continue to monitor this and report back.
Ty, I have a question about that. So do, have we done any analysis to understand what percentage of those customers that are associated with SDGNE are part of our, are, are within our territory, are number cities?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Moscow, and, and this is all very recent information that's been issued. This, this rulemaking just started just, just a couple of weeks ago, and so the, these, these numbers are certainly new to, I think, most everybody who was not, you know, closely tracking these, these enrollments and these, and the customer debt, which is, you know, not, not public information per se. So I, I don't think that any analysis has been undertaken in that regard.
You know, because it's an interesting question, and I guess this is what you are working with, working on with CalCCA and what they're working on as well. But if you had, I mean, if you had a customer with SDGNE and they're behind, you know, they're a thousand dollars behind, they're a hundred dollars behind, and then their situation is improved, or somehow they're, they're put on some sort of repayment plan with SDGNE, even though they're, you know, if they're, they stay as an SDG, SDGNE customer, they're receiving power and perhaps they're paying more each month, not only for the power that they're receiving, but to get caught up on the, the, the rear edge, or there's some program to allow them to give them some help on that. You know, it, it, it's, it's an interesting situation, then if you basically go to the CCE, how, how, how would, how would that happen? Would, would we be providing power for this customer? And then when they're paying, would that be going to SDGNE as opposed to us, or how does that work?
No, I, I think that's, it's something that is going to, going to be worked out through this proceeding, and I think that's an excellent question. It's, it's one of several questions that we have, but, you know, the, the status of customers who come over with a, you know, in a rear edge due to SDGNE is, and what processes follow there in terms of collections is, is an issue that we're going to, we're going to have to work through as part of this proceeding. A, a, a related issue, and I think you alluded to it, Mr. Moscow, is that the, the, the allocation, how, how payments are allocated between the, the utility and the CCA program for customers who fall under these types of programs, or the, the program that's going to be developed coming out of this proceeding is also an important question, and one that we need to make sure we not only establish solid and clear rules for as part of the proceeding, but also when that, that process is established, make sure that it's being implemented properly by SDGNE and, and by our folks at Calpine. So I, I would anticipate a pretty close contact with Calpine on these sorts of issues as well. We'll certainly be reached out to them as a proceeding unfolds.
All right, and so that's what the proceeding is. The proceeding is to, to come up with a process for rectifying us. You know, all right, all right, well, this is, this is a really interesting issue, and definitely look forward to hearing more as it evolves.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a follow up comment? We actually had quite a discussion at the staff level today on this very issue in terms of making sure that we work closely with Calpine and, and SDGNE to make sure whatever rules are adopted, they're administered correctly, and there are, there is the potential for there to be some inequities, and so we need to, to tackle that through Ty at CalCCA, because all the CCA's are going to be impacted by this same issue. So we have to make sure that we, we, we want to be aware of the, the appropriate way to make these adjustments, because we don't want to hurt customers any worse than they're already been impacted, but we want to make sure that, that the application is fair to us as well as to the, the IOUs, and so, yeah, keeping it close, in touch with that.
Well said, that's exactly, those are exactly my feelings.
And, and the other part of it is this really relates to residential customers.
Right.
We're actually, phase three is a ways off, so right now, this is not an issue that's going to be, that we're going to be facing in a practical way right away, but it's one that we want to make sure when we get there that it's appropriate.
Ty, I was just thinking about something when, when, when Bill was saying that. So any of the, the one point nine trillion dollar package that's coming out of DC, is any of that earmarked for rate? Rate help here?
You know, not to my knowledge, I don't think there's any, I'm not aware of any specific.
I could chime in on that a little bit.
Yes.
There is a little bit of funding, so some of the cities and counties that are getting funding and giving out rental assistance funding. You can also use that to cover utilities as well, water and energy.
Say, we in San Diego are opting to do, to do that as well.
All right. All right, if there are no other questions, Ty, you can proceed with your.
Thank you, thank you. Just a couple of. Thank you. Thank you. Just a couple of them, additional items to touch on. Um we're also active in uh SDGNE's general rate case phase two. Um and really these, these issues that are being raised here go back to uh the issue that we faced in the era proceedings. Uh which is that SDGNE uh was not taking into account uh departing load, meaning the, the, you know, customers and the energy demand. That's going from the utility to the, to the CCA program uh specifically to STCP. Um the, they uh had uh made in this separate proceeding, um made some steps toward doing the same thing. Uh essentially uh for rate setting in twenty twenty-two. Uh and so we are uh in- intervening in that proceeding. To um head off a repeat of uh what we just went through, um which I'm sure everyone is eager to avoid. Um so we're taking that step. And then uh finally, you can get, please uh advance to the last slide, Sebastian. Um and then finally, we, I just wanted to report um that we have uh filed uh SDCP's final twenty twenty RPS plan. Uh and um we, that's been accepted by the commission. So there will be a final decision on, you know, the merits of all the plans filed by the. CCA programs and, and investor on utilities and so forth. Um uh just, just to note, uh RPS plans are forward looking resource planning. Documents uh and can be a bit challenging for new CCA programs to meet all the requirements that the commission set out here. Since there's not the same uh portfolio that's in place for uh longstanding programs or, you know, utilities that have been in business for decades. Um so nevertheless, um it has been filed and uh and so we will look forward to the uh decision from the commission. Um those are all the, the issues that I wanted to report to the board and happy to take any further questions.
So has our local utility uh filed their, their twenty twenty report?
Yes, they have as well. Yes.
Have we had an opportunity to digest that?
No, but I'm, I'm certainly happy to report back on that as well. Uh so we can do that. Yep.
Yeah, absolutely. Would love to hear about that in the future. Any questions for, for Ty? Alright, let's go back to Bill. Oh, I'm sorry. Um uh Director DeDina?
No, it's, it's fine. I'm going, I'm trying to figure out, I went for Microsoft Teams with a chat, you know, the raised hand is at the bottom. I don't ask anyway. Hey, I wanna thank you for bringing up this issue of the rate debt, right? I think, you know, it, we've got some profoundly impacted, you know, folks with rent arrears. And you know, now this whole issue of, I hadn't even thought about it, the power rear, you know, the, the power company arrears, we do have water company arrears. So. Kind of just hurts me thinking about folks who've lost their jobs and, you know, in thousands of dollars in debt to their landlords and power companies and utilities. So. Let's just make sure whatever we do, we do it the most compassionate way to figure out how to, to make sure that we don't have this divide where we get folks who can afford, you know, don't. Aren't in debt because they can afford to pay their bills. And then we're not getting those folks who have some problems. Like, I know we're, we're gonna do that, but I think it's. Just given what happened in Texas with these guys with sixteen thousand dollar bills, I think we have an opportunity to show that we're a compassionate. You know, company that's very interested in equity and, and addressing fairly this issue. So I know we're gonna do that, but I, I think it just gives us a, a, another opportunity. To shine and show that we really are compassionate and care for, you know, not only giving our rate, our rate payers a great deal, but. Figuring, helping to figure this out. So, so whatever we do, let's be on the cutting edge of this nationally in terms of how we're, how we're going to address. These issues, cause this isn't going away. This is, we're talking about, you know, two to three years in, in the future with these folks having this download, right?
Mr. DeDina, I did wanna mention that uh STCP uh recently uh ma- maybe just before you came on board. Um decided to participate in their aridage management plan, which is one of the predecessor programs that was just, that was launched not too long ago. And that does provide uh uh bill relief for customers who are behind on their payments. Um so we've already taken some steps in that regard. I just wanted to point that out and certainly hear you loud and clear on, on um the importance of this issue and. The com- compassion approach that needs to be taken.
Yeah, and regardless, all of us now have to incorporate that into our business model. I mean, just, you know, it's something we hadn't thought, right? All these folks that just. Have, you know, in addition to having to pay these crazy rents, that reduces their purchasing power. It, it affects everything, right? The economy. So, yeah, anyway. Thanks for, I'm glad we're addressing it and I'm, I'm glad we brought it up. So, thanks.
Thank you. Bill Carnahan, did you, um are you up next?
Yes, I think so. Uh we can rack up the, the PowerPoint. Uh let me just say as a preface, uh you know, I've been thinking. Uh uh having been through this uh effort before on startups of CCA's, we're actually a kind of a, a, a touch point here where. Where uh come the first of March, we're going from strictly a startup to an operational company as well. Uh but we haven't yet left this startup phase. So uh I, I sort of calculated, is there life after launch? And uh what I would like to do is take some time this evening to, to accomplish a couple of things in the next uh several minutes that we're gonna talk. And. I, I would like to give you uh, have the staff give you an overview of what they see changing and what we do. After we go into an operational phase. What are these folks that we're hiring and the folks that you see in the, in the org chart gonna be doing from now on? We're not building, uh totally just building this organization. We're actually running this organization and, and that has some implications. And we need to add some more talent as we go along. And I thought, you know, if you've never, you've never really been through it, uh you really don't have any idea what, what we're gonna. What all these people are gonna do. So we're gonna make this sort of very informal. It'll give you a chance to meet uh some of the new folks, cause they're gonna tell you what they're gonna be doing. Uh it gives uh, gives us a chance to really operate more like a team for all of us, including the, the board to, to get to know what, what. You know, windmills we're gonna be jousting and, and what we're gonna be doing going forward. Uh I wanna use it as really the first step of our strategic planning. Effort. And that is uh in the overview, we're gonna be pointing out some issues that we think we need to address in the strategic planning effort. Now, we're not gonna prioritize and we're not gonna talk about them tonight, but they're only, they will give you a clue of the kinds of things that we, that we will, will wanna talk about. And then as is envisioned now in April, uh or in March, we would actually go through some of those topical areas and try to pick. Or eight or ten or twelve uh prioritized issues that you really wanna focus on for next year. Then we would go back as a staff and try to flesh those out, talk about what's possible, what's the timing, that sort of thing. Come back then in the May meeting. And use that then to actually establish our strategic planning, uh plan going forward. That'll help us build the budget. That'll help us. Uh dedicate staff to different efforts and things like that. So we, we, I'm, I'm trying to accomplish a lot of things uh in this one informal. Meeting tonight, so that we all can walk away knowing each other better. We can walk away knowing what our issues are. You'll have more insights of the. Who we are and what we're doing. And so uh we're here to, I, I guess I almost call this that SDCP two point O, but that's kind of a. People do that all the time here. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna call it that. We're gonna call it life after launch. So the next, the next slide. Well, you know, we started night in October nineteen, we've been through the startup phase, now we're in the operation phase. This slide is really the overarching issues. And then we're gonna have each division in the organization talk to you about what they're gonna do. So we're gonna start with an overview and then we're gonna drill down one level. And, and then you'll get to get a glimpse of what's happening. But these are what I call potential concepts that I think we're gonna need to talk about. Uh and maybe come uh issues, it may become high priority uh issues in the uh uh strategic planning effort. So. The first one is what we're grouping and calling human capital. Oh, very mundane, but we, we need to talk about developing. Uh an office-based transition plan. You know, we don't have an office. We don't even have a conference room. And as we move out of the, the Covina uh era. We don't, we don't purport that we need to have office, permanent office space right away, cause we're still gonna be growing. So we probably want some flexible space that can grow with us month to month until we get to, to a, a period of stabilization. Probably the end of a year and a half or so. Uh and during that time, then we can explore permanent office space. We can take a look at the. New areas that we might wanna target to locate our space in. We can look at the type of those facility. Maybe it's something related to energy and, and. The green, greenhouse gases and things like that. It may be a common theme among the tenants, so something like that. So. We, we wanna tee that up for you and we think that's gonna be an effort and we wanna work with you in terms of how we go about that. So that first of all, when, when we are able to. To have people into the office, we have an office. And so it's temporary and it's gonna need to be flexible, but we don't know when that is. And so we're gonna have to figure out how to, how to make that work. And so that's an item. We need a, a, a plan now, since we are staffing up. We need a good plan to attract and retain qualified employees uh with an emphasis on local candidates and on promoting diversity and. And equity and those kinds. That we need help doing. We're not experts at that. So we need to have a firm plan in place uh that as, as we get too far. Into our staffing, we can kick it in the year and, and, and have a, a successful program hopefully. So. So that's an item I think we need to talk more about. Uh we need to probably look at developing internships or apprentice programs to help grow our own local. Uh and that will also, I think, maybe if, if the, some of those folks can be located in, in your, your city, we could help, help your cities as well. So. That's something I'd like for us to take a look at. Uh as we move away from pretty much consultant driven to staff driven. Or at least a combination thereof, we need to learn how to optimize the use of the consultants uh to supplement staff. And we need to make sure the staff directs those efforts of the consultants. So we're getting maximum uh maximum interface in what we need to do. We're always gonna need consultants of some kind, uh but we need to make sure we have the optimum mix. And so we need, we need a policy for that, we need a strategy for that. Uh organizationally, I, I, I know you all went through an effort uh last year uh on a mission and vision and goals. I think we need to review those. Are they still relevant? Are there, are those things that we need to update? Uh so that'll be a part of our effort. I'm, I'm gonna recommend that be a part of our effort, effort. Uh and then along the same line, we, we are all hearing rumors of. Uh in different places about folks who might wanna become members of, of, of SDCP. Well, you know, I think we, we need to. Hit that head on and be prepared and actually explore the advantages and disadvantages of adding new members. Uh if, if, if new members don't benefit the existing members, you know, you would have to question why you would do it. Uh there are ways to mitigate that. There are ways to handle it. I'm familiar with what a couple of other CCA's have done uh to sort of a test of, of equity of those members coming in. Uh so we're not gonna debate the, the, that issue tonight, but we're gonna tee it up. And I think it's certainly something we need to, we need to take on. Uh in the financial area, I think we need to determine uh reserve targets uh so that we're comfortable with the reserve levels. And there's a lot of thought that needs to go into that, uh to the extent that we have headroom compared to uh SDGNE rates. We have to figure out. How we want, how we want to most effectively utilize that headroom. You know, it could be in, in reserves. It could be in, in lower rates. And it could be in programs. It could be all of the above, most likely will be. So we need to, we need to make sure that we know how we wanna be. Uh have custodianship of, of any uh excess uh uh revenues over expenses that we have. So we will, we'll be taking a look at that. In the power area, uh I think one of the things we need to do is develop a three-year plan for new proj- projects and programs based on the member needs. Small local projects, those, and programs. We need to be out working with you all, working with the, the community advisory committee. Working with anyone that, that you all would like to have involved in that effort for us to begin to identify the kinds of programs that we can support. That will benefit you. We'll, we'll go out and sample what other CCA's are doing, get some ideas, you know, but then we'll involve folks uh in trying to, to. Put local in, 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 in our charter, you know, which is already there. So uh again, I don't have any recommendations yet, but I think it's an effort that we should undertake. Uh we need to review the phase three uh uh trigger date. Uh we're thinking now that we probably ought to look at some phasing. Uh for phase three, since it's such a huge number. But again, that's something we'll have to talk about in the uh, in the uh strategic planning. Process. Uh we need to determine the indirect benefits of local generation. We've already had some meetings with local developers, local. Local utility scale project developers who, who are trying to make the case that their projects may not be uh. Per kilowatt hour cheaper than other projects, but there are benefits of local economic development, local jobs, things like that. Uh that, that they should get credit for. And quite frankly, we agree with that. We think that, that we do have an emphasis on local projects. And so we should sit down with them and others uh and try to develop, but what kind of credits or what kind of uh pluses do they get in their column? Because they need that, need that kind of criteria, lo- local uh uh location being one. Yet, we don't have the program yet, but I think we need, we need to talk about it. Uh we also need to look at uh other local programs that aren't necessarily related just to energy itself, raw energy and the delivery of that. That's uh, uh the uh transportation, electrication. You know, all the cities are looking at that. Everybody's looking at that. You know, uh. We're in the energy business and conserving that energy or maximizing use of that energy for, for certain uh purposes that. Uh to decrease fossil fuels is, is a goal that we, we should embrace. And so we need to take a look at how we can partner with folks and, and making those things happen. Community solar, you know, uh uh you, you could look at renters, you know, uh pay the electric bill, but they don't own the building. So there's no incentive to put solar on the roof for them. But maybe you could do a, a downtown parking lot or a, uh you know, an open space with. Uh 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 city-owned or, or SDCP-owned or, or maybe you do some interim of uh private financing. And, and the uh premium that the renters pay for that project goes to pay the debt off. And so they actually feel like they're a part of. Moving forward as well. We also need to take a look at securing grants, you know, governmental entities, at least the electric side of the governmental entities. Are not used to working with grants, quite frankly. Uh you know, we're, we're uh in the enterprise fund. We have a separate revenue source. We're not fighting for the same. Same tax dollars. And so this is, this is the old world. And so w- we're not very good at, at that. And so uh I'm thinking. We need some, some access to some talent that can keep track of, find out what's available and go out there and get us money for, for purposes that, that meet. What we wanna do. So that's just a, a laundry list of things that I think we ought to have on our list to be looking at in the very near future. Uh at least from a big picture uh area. And you're, you all are gonna put things on and take things off and prioritize them. And we're gonna come up with an agenda uh moving forward that, that you all wanna do and, and that your constituents wanna do. And we're gonna do our best to be a part of that. I'd like to shift now, if we can uh uh go to the next slide. We'll now shift and take a look at the, the. These look like big boxes, but as you know, functionally, they serve different purposes. And we're gonna approach this on the basis of having different. Each functional area talk to you about how their lives are changing now that we're operational, things that they have on their list to, to do. Give you a better idea of who they are, what they're doing. So, so that as we move forward, uh you will, the next slide, please. So these are the three areas, operations, power supply and finance. So we're gonna dig down a little bit deeper and you're gonna get to uh see some of the staff. And tell you how proud of they are of what they do. So uh with that, we're gonna start with the Cody's area, uh the area of uh operations.
I'm gonna pass this right over to Laura. This is the beauty of having employees. Now I don't have to talk as much. And so I think you all have met Laura, but she is our new. Still new, newish uh director of regulatory legislative affairs. So I'm gonna pass the slide right over to her.
Thanks, Cody. Yeah, so I mean, there are some things that now that I'm here, we can be a little bit more proactive about, but I'll, I'll go ahead and go in the order of. Cody's slides. So obviously, there are a lot of proceedings at the CPUC. We've been engaging those. We're gonna continue to engage in those. Um with not just myself, but also obviously Ty is a huge help. And we've also engaged Keys and Fox for the different era proceedings in the past. And so those are highly important. They've been important. They'll continue to be important. Once we launch and are serving more customers, there are ongoing compliance. Filings that we will need to do. So some of those, um, some of those will stay the same now that we're serving. So not a whole lot changes on the compliance side. But we'll have more to report once we start serving more load. Um in terms of proactive, we, you know, we can be proactive on the regulatory side as well. But also on the legislative side. So Cody and I are starting to think about how we'd like to develop a legislative platform. And we definitely would wanna do that in discussion with the member cities and ultimately the board, once we get a little bit more input about the sorts of. Bills that are being proposed and the positions that we would like to take on those. Um so we're reviewing right now, there's, there's been about six. Uh bills that Cal CCA has done analysis on. And so we're reviewing those as well as the other bills that were introduced last week. Uh last, last week was the bill introduction deadline. So there are a lot of bills that have come in that we're still analyzing and trying to figure out. How SDCP may or may not uh want to engage on those. So we're starting to set up more meetings with uh member city staff to discuss those. On PCI legislation, that's definitely a big one this year. SB six twelve is the uh Cal CCA. Um PCI legislation, that's definitely a big one this year, SB six twelve is the uh Cal CCA sponsored legislation that. Is a big step in the right direction, and uh it it would codify a working group three PCI proposal. Um which I won't get too much infinity gritty on that, but that's definitely something that I think uh SDCP will want to support. However, we're also doing some long-term thinking on the PCI issue, um and starting to look at ways that we can continue to improve that problem. Uh in sort of a a longer term initiative. Um and so that's, that's sort of an overview, um I don't know if there's any questions about regulatory legislative, but I'm happy to answer any of those if there are.
Thank you, Laura. Uh so I have a question, Laura, so um are we thinking about? Um I've I've often heard that there aren't a lot of folks up in Sacramento, up in the legislature. That are completely understanding of CCEs, there's only so many that come from cities that are part of CCEs. Um and so are we um kind of thinking about who our champions are gonna be and and forming relationships with some of. Some legislative uh folks that could be our champions and help us carry bills in the future and even uh help us. Um to uh to defeat bills that are not so friendly to CCEs.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, as you mentioned, there are a lot of people who are still not as familiar with the CCE model, but there are a lot of. Um assembling members and senators that ha- have uh CCAs in their service territory. And so, for example, the um SB six twelve bill, which is the active PCI bill, already has a lot of co-authors, and so what Cal CCA did. Uh including one actually from the city of Encinitas, I think it's um Tasha Borner Horvath, if I'm not butchering that. Um so she is a co-author to SB six twelve, and so Cal CCA has reached out to um all the different legislators that have. CCAs in their service territory, and there's quite a lot of them, so we are starting to uh go out and educate on the PCI issue, but yes, I think that beyond. Uh those who have CCEs in their service territory is where we're going next.
Yeah, we should definitely uh start to cultivate, uh Tasha Burner Horvath was a fa- uh prior colleague of mine on the Encinita City Council. And so she would be a perfect person to start to cultivate. Uh I know Todd Gloria uh before he was mayor was was a champion of ours up in Sacramento, so we definitely need to kind of form. Uh you know, kind of develop more frie- uh relationships up there and and cultivate those relationships uh so that they can help us out.
Yeah, and I think you recall this in the era proceeding, we we tapped into some of those relationships um in order to get some help and. Um I think, you know, having Mayor Gloria in office, we we could tap into some of his relationships. Senator Atkins has been uh Senator Protem has been very interested in what we're doing, and and we're um, we plan to. Uh brief all of them on these bills, once we actually are able to digest them ourselves internally. And and then I think we can tap into just member city alleged teams, to the extent that they exist or are interested. Um just to make sure they at least know what's going on in case something is affecting them, and we can help build a coalition that way as well.
Absolutely, I mean, all of our our cities, you know, pay for lobbyists and have folks up there, and so, you know, uh we can, when we're updating our our. Our our kind of policy wishes or our our values uh statement, um in Encinitas, we could always put stuff in there that that's uh. That's specific to the CCE. Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that the gist of this and publicly everything that Phil's uh wanting us to cover is that we're able to. Starting able to be more proactive rather than just reactive and trying to be able to put those plans together.
Yeah, and just sort of built, building off what Bill said, um you know, now, now that I'm here, I'm able to engage more with Cal CCA. On what they are doing, but also what they aren't doing, and so there are some joint CCA working groups on some. Uh in some areas that we aren't as active on yet, but I hope that we will be in the future, so transportation electrification is a perfect example. Sebastian and I are now participating in a joint CCA transportation electrification working group. Um I had a meeting earlier this week with SDG regarding vehicle to grid integration, and so. You know, while handling the bare minimum compliance and regulatory proceedings, we're also trying to uh engage in a little bit more of the. Longer term things that I think that hopefully will grow into and be able to do more in those uh in those areas, once we're serving more customers.
Well, I thought I couldn't be more excited because of the launch. Now I hear from you guys, and I'm like, just so excited, I mean, this is just great. So keep on going, this is just a lot of, this is very exciting, so thank you.
Next slide, please, yeah. Um and so, hence the couple, we don't have staff, so I still have to talk a little bit. Um one area that is seems maybe less um uh substantive, but is super important to us, and. Uh we've been spending a lot of time over the last year, building our brand and who we are as an as an organization, um so we have this. Beautiful array of marketing materials um that we've been putting together, sending out, building our website, um building a functional website. Um with multiple languages and just really kind of sleek branding, we've gotten a ton of positive feedback on it. Um and you all have been involved every step of the way, so you know what we're doing, um but really building up that presence so that. People know that we are a new organization and that we're reputable and are here to serve them. Um we, in all of these areas too, in case we forget to mention it, we do have consulting teams and and you saw that in the org chart that that. Complements the staff that we either have or will have um to help us move all these forward, because every area is a a pretty tremendous lift. And it takes a a team of people on putting these things together, and so. I'll leave that there actually for the marketing communications, unless there's any questions here. This is the area where we're thinking about, you know, that the launch event, this all comes out of the side of our house. Um where we are putting together, you know, community events and and what those look like now, and in the COVID era, as we launch each. Phase of customers, that change is a little bit depending on the type of customer, so that all you'll see all those rolling out over the next year or so.
I know Bill Baber is probably gonna ask this question, so I'll I'll ask it for him, uh which is that 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 I just. Communicating with our customers uh as um, you know, uh you know, and and having a strategy of communicating with them and making sure we're. We're doing what we need to do to communicate with them, I I know that that um, you know, there's been a lot of excitement, at least in Encinitas, about the the. The launch uh our municipal and quasi-governmental accounts, and I think that then causes um some of our residents to say, oh. I didn't, I didn't realize that we're gonna launch this early, so they're starting, people start hearing about it, because, you know, at city council meetings, we're talking about launch. Um it's on social media and stuff like that, but but for some segments of our customer base, they're not being launched for over a year, and so they're not necessarily. Getting um communication uh communicated with, so I just want to bring that up, that.
Joe, can I add?
Yes.
You're already behind, uh Bill and Cody have already spoken to all of our municipal customers, and we had them at city council last night. Talking to all of our council members in the public, so they're way ahead of La Mesa in talking about where we're going.
Thanks, Phil, I owe you. Uh into that, to that point a bit more, Joe, I mean, we'll talk a lot about it on the, uh we have another slide on data and kind of back office. Because those two areas blend, right? We have a little bit of the communication and messaging publicly and social media and print materials and. Events and those types of things, but then we follow up with this very customized customer interaction um with. Uh municipal accounts, obviously, we only have about fifty in uh distinct customers in our phase one. And we've been spending a lot of time doing a lot of individual meetings to tell, help them understand who we are, what our rates are, how to check their data. Um all sorts of work, um so that will continue, and we'll be bringing on more staff to to manage this kind of key account.
I guess I, my only, my only comment would be that that as we try to segment that customer base, and as we try to specifically. Communicate with one segment of that customer base, other cut, other segments are hearing about that, and so we're not necess- there. The, I think in some ways, they can't necessarily be isolated, you know, um you know, so if we're communicating with the municipalities. And and the quasi-governmental accounts in Encinitas, the residential customers, and maybe that was my fault, because I'm kind of jumping the gun and out on social media, but. But uh but I think then the residents are, you know, the commercial, the businesses, like, so then I got today. Uh an email from the Encinitas uh Chamber of Commerce, some of the Main Streets Association, so I sent that on to you, uh so they heard about it. Uh and then um and then some residents have have called, and so I think that that uh there's, there's. There's a need to, I I think, once we communicate with one segment, all the segments are not massively hearing, but they're they're hearing, and so there's a need to kind of. Not necessarily just be so specific and targeted with our communications, because everybody's hearing.
Yeah, and you know, we're getting, and to the extent you all have feedback, too, we're getting a lot of good feedback, because our website is kind of the repository of information, right? So they have a question, and if they can't find it on our website, we need to clean that up and make sure that they can, whether when they're launching, or how do they compare their rates? All the questions that we're hearing, we're gathering those and and tweaking what we have available to make sure people can find the information easily. And then we're, we're trying to do one-on-one communication where we can.
And and this is really the purpose of that, the last bullet, it, you know, we we originally, the original, original plan, we were gonna go boom, boom, boom. Phase one, phase two, phase three, and you couldn't catch your breath in between, and it was over and done. And now that we have a a bit of a delay between two and three. Uh thi- this calls for us sitting down with our experts here and addressing the very issue you're talking about, how do you keep them interested? How do you keep their their uh expectations under control, and and I I think that's still a a a that that plan is still. Not complete, I think we're still wrestling with some of those issues about how to do that, one of the reasons we're talking about phasing is maybe to help. Mitigate some of that as well, so to me, that's really kind of still under development. Uh to to try to answer the question you're talking about, you don't want to get them too fired up, you you don't want them to forget about us. So what's, what's the happy medium there, you know?
Right.
Well, now we know that uh Chair Moscow's Facebook page is very popular, so if we need to communicate anything, that's what we're using.
Director, uh Tadina.
Yeah, now first, the the marketing stuff's really good, and so, you know, I think Bill, you and I talked about, you know, the organizational development, strategic planning at some point. Um you know, somebody started an organization that's been around for twenty years now, and um you know, and is really focused on the um. Organizational development, team building piece, and I think that's a mistake people make with strategic planning. They focus on the strategy without the organizational development piece, so to me, you know. The marketing is only a front for an organization that hopefully is the most innovative. Right, strategic, fast-moving, smart CCE on the planet, I think that needs to be the goal. And obviously, it's inequitable, right, that treats people really well, that people really like, and then obviously saves the planet, so. Um I I think the thing is, that takes a lot of work as well, I I, you know, I I wanna make sure that we're all in government, where, you know, we don't know. This way I have time to focus on the team building organizational culture thing, because cities have been around a long time, but. We have the opportunity to start something, we're starting something new, and I I just want to make sure that there's a lot of organizations in San Diego, whether it's UST or. Um you know, other folks that really help on the organizational development, team building piece, really the culture of our organization. Uh I think that's really important, and it's clear that this board, and from what I've seen so far is, I I think we're we're getting there, but it's gotta be very intentional. I think the the missing piece, your discussion, Bill, was also, because it plays into this, is the board governance piece, I think we have to really be intentional about that as well, right? We have to really acknowledge that, that's an evolving working process, and that we we have to work together on that independently. Of the organizational development and then the strategy, the strategy is the outcome, but it's it's having this very vibrant organization that we're feeding. All the time and working on, um especially this transition from virtual to um whatever it's gonna be in the future. And then the independent part of the board oversight and governance, and how we work with each other, and how we grow, right, and and what that means, so. So to make sure that we, when we talk about this strategic stuff and operational stuff, that we acknowledge that, and we we are cognizant of it, because I think a lot of organizations. They get right into the strategy, because they're all super smart on the strategy programmatic piece, and then the hard piece, as we all know. The work is actually kind of easy, it's like, how do people get along apart, that's hard, right, I mean, right, in theory. So anyway, that's, that's all I'm gonna say, my, that's my organizational development executive director cap on um from my professional life. Gone through it a million times, and uh but I'm really excited about this, the logo's super cool, the graphics are super cool. It seems like we got really smart staff and really cool board members and an amazing mission. And they throw in the equity piece, and it's already world-class, but I want to make sure that, I I told Cody this, I'm gonna be continuing to pushing, right? We're gonna be the Lakers of CCAs, I'm, I grew up in LA, and so before I moved, I be, so we're gonna be the Lakers, whether it's Kobe Lakers. Or the Magic Lakers, or the LeBron Lakers, or the Jerry Lucas, uh not Jerry Lucas, Jerry Walt.
Jerry West.
Lakers, I don't care, we're the Lakers of like CCE, okay, so there you go, anyway. But I'm serious about that, we can joke about it, but it's really, really important, I don't want anybody to, I know we all know that, but I'll be that voice that's continue to push that. Because I think it's, i- if you don't pay attention to it all the time, then you slip, right, so there you go.
Right.
And and I would welcome that, I think we need that kind of input and that kind of professionalism, I mean, you all have skill sets that we don't have, and so we're gonna tap. Everything we can find, so we want to be successful. Cody?
Next slide, please. Okay, and then this one, I'm gonna hand over to Sebastian, this and then in the next slide, um he has been tackling a lot of this. Um again, with teams of consultants, it seems, um so Sebastian, go ahead and take this one away.
Thank you, Cody, and and good evening, everyone, I'm happy to be here and uh excited, excited for for Monday. Yeah, we have been working very closely with several consultants, uh but particularly for this slide would be Capine. Um as as you uh may already know, they have uh worked with several other CCAs happen on this date. And they have a lot of experience in making sure that there's a smooth transition between SDG customers and our customers, and. And and that's the the main component of it is, we have had uh weekly meetings with them. Uh and besides those weekly meetings, they meet additionally with SDG to make sure that uh the data that they obtained from. SDG is as accurate as possible, uh that they conduct uh billing tests to make sure, again, that there are little to no errors. Uh in the transition, uh and also ensuring that the billing process is is as as. Accurate and as correct as possible, um that's why we're, we're starting off small with the small face one to. Uh I look at the kinks and 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 see what doesn't work and and make it work for for the subsequent phases. Um it has really been a tremendous effort, but but one that that I've enjoyed, I I enjoy. Uh looking at those details and 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 asking more questions than than we have time for sometimes during meetings. This is very critical for our cash flow, we we want to know, um again, it comes back to the data piece. We want to know that the numbers that are coming in, so we can accurately forecast and and plan out our 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 next fiscal year budget. Um the last bullet point here, uh we are working with Capine to develop an online bill comparison tool. Uh and the image to the right of your screen uh is a sample of what that would look like. Um this is uh something that they developed for Western Community Energy, and our tool will look very similar to that. It will be available on our website and allow uh customers uh to go in. Uh have their usage data readily available and uh know how much they would be um paying with our service. Uh we're, we're very excited for that, uh among other things that that I also wanted to mention is that uh we are working on. Building out uh bill simplification on our website, uh so our users can go in and and better identify what kind of rate that they're in. Whether it's, um and I'm going to the specific details, because it it can uh go down a rabbit hole very quickly, but. Uh we're working on it very quickly, we're also um uh one thing that. That we are able to provide is is rate stability as compared to the incumbent utility, in that we are able to. Set rates uh for once or or twice a year, and that allows our customers to better uh budget their their year. Uh moving forward. I'll pause right there, uh and see if there are any questions before I move to the next slide.
Sebastian, is this mainly for residential use? Um I think it it looks like it would be really great for for for. Uh uh our neighbors and my my neighbors and and for residents, uh but I'm also um thinking about some of the small businesses that may. Um may want to take a uh use something like this, is this gonna be good for for some of our commercial accounts as well? Where there may be multiple different tariffs at play?
Yeah, yeah, great question, Chair, uh the tool will be available for all customer classes.
And we plan to have it ready in April, um I want to add one thing on to the the work that Calpine is doing, I don't think it's fully. Um appreciated, but uh they have a team of technical experts that, you know, um sync up on the backend with SDG. Um especially through the transition from their old uh customer management system to their new one. Ensure they're doing testing that and make sure all that works so that we can bill appropriately. When our power is flowing, uh starting next week, they receive data in batches from SDG. Process all of that by each individual account, what rate they're on, the time of use, how much power was used. Run that against our rates, process their billing amount, send that bill amount back to S G N E. They only have three days to do that. And that amount gets placed on the bill with S G N E, the rest of S G N E's bill and sent out to customers. And that has to be accurate. We have a commitment by them to be, I forget the exact number, it's in the contract, but ninety nine point seven percent accurate every single time. Um, so it's a massive amount of data management and synchronization. And it's it's pretty incredible to understand how it all works. And so they have a massive team. They're also running our call center as well, which right now it's it's pretty minimal. Um, but thanks to some of the media, we've been getting our call lines increasing a little bit. But that will ramp up dramatically as we roll out residential customers. So it's it's a pretty fascinating and a huge operation. So we're really happy to have Calpine doing that and the fact that they're local as well is really fantastic.
Yeah, because I I I know with a lot of our commercial, industrial and quasi-governmental accounts, you know, the rate comparison is going to be something that's very important to them.
Calpine has been helping us do that for individual customers, the larger customers running it manually for us until this tool is ready.
Great. Seeing no other questions, I'll move to the next line. For me, this is the exciting one. The programming opportunities that we are have been working on and that we're looking at. Two of those here, you've been familiar with, that's been the development of our N M program and then the development of our feeding tariff program. We're very excited about those on on the N M program as we've been conducting outreach to the face one customers. They've asked about that and and we've gathered that interest. Where a staff are expected to bring recommended N M rate. Hopefully next month, due to existing contract negotiations, our P A team had a little bit less spent with for this month. But but we're we're expecting to bring that forward next month. And 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 our goal is to to provide a good N M rate for customers. For the feeding tariff program, um, we are starting the the building phase of of the structure. So so keep an eye out for more information on that and when applications will be open. These acronyms here that you see, D A G G T and C S G T, those are disadvantaged communities in community solar green tariff programs. Laura here, as well as everyone else in the staff, we've been working with Ty and Christine over at Tostolaw to know that what that would look like. And essentially, it would create a local development of renewables and provide a an additional twenty percent discount on a customer's bill from degeneration and from the T N D side. So from our side and from the S S G N E side. And we're pretty excited about it. There's a lot of work to be done, but I that's coming down the pipe.
What's what's the C S dash D T?
Uh, Community Solar.
Green tariff program. Got it.
And 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 with that, uh, ju- just to provide a little bit more context. They utilize carbon buyer screens. So it's a state program, so it's for the utilized carbon buyer screens. Three point O, however, uh, the four point O version was just released for draft public comment. Once I I learned of that, I I shared that with your staff and and some of them were very excited to to see that and and engage. Because as you as you can imagine, some of the old census tracts, I imagine will be changing and 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 we want to, we want to be attentive of that. Before I I move into looking ahead, I also wanted to to share that in addition to the transportation electrification working group that Laura and I are participating. I've also been participating in the Equity Subcommittee of Congress Screen. I've been making an effort to have our voices there pretty regularly. And I I can share that I've been sharing that we don't like to use disadvantaged communities. We prefer to use community self-concern and and after a while, they they've been picking up on that. And 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 I was very happy to see that they're starting to use communities of concern as well. Maybe steps, but uh, but I thought that was pretty, pretty exciting. And then, uh, yeah, looking ahead, just just thinking about innovative ideas and and like, uh, this would be part. I'll defer to to be on cardio of the strategic planning session, what programmatic opportunities to look forward to for the next year, whether that's solar and battery incentives or we're just trying to find something new that is unique to the needs of our communities. So so a lot of opportunities and excitement, but I want to pass her there and see if there are any questions.
All right. All right, now we're going to transition over to Byron. So the operations side you'll see is all the customer retention, which is our revenue. Protecting the revenue that comes in and also from the regulatory side, protecting that revenue and advocating for our customers on what they need and really customer engagement. And so now I'll pass it over to Byron to talk about the the revenue that goes out on our product that we provide. Go ahead, Byron.
Great, thank you. And and first of all, introduce myself, being new to the organization here. I'm in week three, so I think I'm the the junior staff member, looking forward to to hiring someone new. So I'm I'm not on coffee duty when we get back to the office. But but anyway, it's been a a good three, been a a a filled three weeks already. We've been busy and and working hard. Um, and so it's been great to be on board. Previously, I I had, was it P G need to kind of cut my teeth in the industry for for six years? Uh, and then went to join Marine Clean Energy five years ago, spent a couple of years there before joining a consulting group, the Energy Authority. Working with a lot of their Californian and C C A clients as well. So have have been around the the C C A space for a while, kind of in in this procurement space. And I'm excited to to be here with the San Diego team and we're again, a great group. Everything I've I've seen so far, it's been incredible. So we're certainly busy and have a lot of fun and a lot of hard work, but also a lot of a lot of fun ahead of us. So on on the my couple of slides here, the power supply, we'll keep them, I think, pretty high level for for now. But I broke them up into kind of what have we been doing to, you know, before launch and then what comes next after launch? Obviously, a lot of it is is ongoing throughout, but I'll I'll break them down here and feel free to interrupt me if you want. I'll pause for for questions as well later on. But as as far as preparation for launch for before Monday, there'd been a whole lot going on. I I think I'll echo Cody's points around the work that we've been doing with consultants. And then again, I I want to also recognize what staff and and the board, what you all have done as well prior to this point. Feel like I'm getting involved here just that, just as we maybe cross the finish line or maybe hit the starting line. I'm not sure which one, but definitely there I've recognized there's a whole lot of work that's been going on to date. So, you know, a lot of that we've continues this week and into the future, but registrations and administration. You know, there's a whole lot just of registering with the the I S O, registering with the P U C and then the, you know, the C E C and the Regis, which is the account management system to manage our renewable energy certificates. Been all that and those kinds of things, those continue, but but we're in place and then ready to go for for March first. Along those lines, we have, obviously, we're going to have customers on Monday. Uh, and so we need to buy and schedule our load in the in the I S O markets. And I'll I'll pause again, the I S O is the Independent System Operator. Sorry, it's an acronym heavy, heavy world here, but the the I S O, then we also, we we buy and sell all of our load and all of our energy through the the I S O. So we've been working again with our scheduling coordinator, Tanaska, another one of our consultants that they've been great to work with so far to get registered there, but then also to develop a load forecast. That's a a huge effort with a number of consultants where we're getting data from from Calpine, working with Pacific Energy Advisors as well. Um, and then we're working with Tanaska and they've got a third party advising them as well on load forecasting. So to make sure that we we forecast our load and we're scheduling appropriately in the market. And and obviously with a phase in month, you know, it's not the full load on March first. It's rolling in overtime, so going kind of account by account to make sure we're scheduling accurately throughout March, getting into to full load on in April. So a a lot of work, again, kind of the nuts and bolts of it going on there, but but you know, all all vital to kind of the program. And then as you guys, I I think are all aware as well, energy procurement has been ongoing since last summer. I I think with some of the your solicitations for resource adequacy, you you've all probably heard enough about that. There's a lot of the regulatory capacity, the resource adequacy, those deadlines were last year. So we met those goals, we still have ongoing goals, but a lot of that's been completed. We shaped and energy contracts as well for for, you know, again, we started that those solicitations, we started purchasing to to make sure that we reduce our risk in the markets, in the I S O markets. And then so we have those solicitations, again, have been done some of that and we have more and more to come. You'll see that on the next slide as well. We've also been involved in, oh, sorry, sorry, I said next slide, but didn't mean to get there quite yet. Thanks, Sebastian. Uh, we've also been doing a lot of contracting already for short-term renewable and short-term carbon-free energy. Short-term usually means kind of, you know, one, one, two or three-year contracts. And so we've been doing that, you know, mainly from one and two-year deals. So we've got some of those in place already, still still more to come, but but we've been active there as well. And then finally, you know, long-term renewable energy supply. You know, it it's great to join an organization and already have a number of these processes in place. So not not to have to start from scratch. So again, to my cap to to those who've been involved to date, both on staff and the consultant side as well, to to work through a solicitation. You know, last last summer and fall, develop a shortlist and negotiate a lot of those contracts as well. So we're in in those negotiations now and I think hope to be, I don't want to jinx it, but I think hope to be bringing at least a couple of those contracts to the board for for review in the coming months. Uh, now I think we can, well, I'll pause there in case there there are any questions on kind of what's been going on so far.
Any questions? Doesn't look like we have any questions.
Hearing none, Sebastian, if you want to move on to the next slide, great, thanks. Um, so what what's next? This all ties in obviously to to our strategic planning and and again, saving the best for last here, like Sebastian did to kind of the the exciting stuff toward the bottom. But the the portfolio management, you know, obviously is our our day-to-day. We've got a number of portfolios that I consider that the resource adequacy portfolio is a, you know, the multiple products that we've discussed before, but local system flex R A, year-ahead requirements, annual requirements, monthly requirements. So those are portfolios, we're always monitoring and always managing as well as our energy market risk, you know, our our load in the markets to make sure we're minimizing risk and have, you know, have those ship contracts and hedges in place to to make sure we're not too exposed, especially in, you know, especially in expensive volatile periods. Also, we've got carbon, renewable and carbon-free energy, obviously a huge part of what we're doing here and those portfolios as well. Take active, active management as well, try to secure a lot of those contracts, you know, in advance. But to the extent we need to to fine tune or true up here and there, you know, that's what we're keeping an eye on. So that's going to be the day-to-day in the top. And then the the long-term planning procurement, again, the the fun stuff we get to look forward to that that really aligns with what we want to do. And I think is the reason a lot of us are here. You know, we've got the strategic planning process that that we've already discussed, integrated resource planning is is very obviously important. There's, you know, kind of a a process now with the the Public Utilities Commission where that that's, you know, organized now, I mean, more organized than it's been, you know, a few years ago. So it's good to be involved in that process, but we're involved on the both on the policy side and also the procurement side of integrated resource planning. Um, and all all that is leading to the the other solicitations and the buying that we still have to do. I I mentioned a lot of the negotiations we've been involved in, a lot of supply we've already contracted for, but we still got a a lot of a big bucket to fill, so to speak. Uh, and so the we, you know, don't want to get ahead of ourselves here, but I think we're expecting, you know, in the coming coming months to have a few solicitations and and, you know, requests for information here for long-term renewable energy, for local renewable energy and also for energy storage as well. So we we haven't scoped out the whole, the whole map or the timeline for that yet, but obviously those are, you know, critical to to how we how we want to serve customers and the product we want and service we want to provide. Uh, and so that's that those are all in the docket here and and likely to be coming in the next few months. So that's the, I think that's the update for me on my couple of slides. Again, I'll pause for any questions, happy to take them out. Um, and if not, we see hearing, seeing me and hearing plenty about this in in meetings.
Well, that's all great information and Byron, thank you so much. Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you. You have an incre- everybody has an incredibly important position, but you definitely have an incredibly important position. Very important task and and one that I actually find very interesting. So and I think many of us do. And so I look forward to having further conversations within our strategic planning session, especially regarding the long-term planning. And I'm sure there's some folks that are listening that are very excited about some of the 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 latter comments that you just made. So thank you so much.
Yep, of course, that, thank you. Mike was happy to be on board.
Yeah, I think we're ready. We're now going to cover the the, I I'm going to cover the 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 last area, the finance area, simply because we we don't have a CFO yet. We're, so can we go to that slide? So I'm going to do that. We are out, as I say, recruiting for, are not advertising for a CFO. That's closed, we're starting to go through the app, applications, can't really tell you right now whether we have good ones or not, because I really haven't gotten that deep into it. That's my weekend chore. So we then then we'll have the executive level taken care of in terms of the full complement that that you've seen with the the other folks here tonight. Remember that what we're talking about when we get fully operational is really not a little small operation, even though we're not going to be employing a lot of people. Well, at the end of phase three, we'll have revenues of over four hundred million dollars a year, which that all has to go out for power supply and all the things it takes to run a business. So the finance area is going to be very, very important as well. They will be the ones that will do the budget. Uh, and we're we're actually going to be working on building a a budget that's uh useful to you all and useful to us. We we, there was a budget done last year, but that doesn't mean we know more this year than we knew last year. So we're going to be making tweaks to it and changing it so that the plan is that you will get monthly budget reports. The uh risk management and finance committee would actually take a fairly deep dive each month into the into the budget and how we're doing compared to the budget and a- any issues that we might want to raise, they'll be, there will be sort of the eyes and ears for the for the board. And then it will come to the board on a monthly basis as well. And we'll highlight for you many things that we think you you might need to know or point out. And we'll be monitoring it throughout the year with quarterly and semi-annual reports. They're the group that will be involved in as an exercise we've just gone through. And all of you remember the pro forma, you know, the dreaded updating the pro forma. Uh, and we did that and then we had the rate design and 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 the rate adoption. So so those will be sort of centered, be a lot of folks involved in that effort, however, but it'll be sort of be in their bailiwick. They'll be monitoring our cash flow because this is this, the money for these contracts and whatnot goes out in big chunks each month. And so we have to make sure that we we have a conservative approach to our banking strategy. There'll be our primary interface with River City Bank, which is where we have our our loan and we have to meet certain criteria. We have what's called a lockbox that that is really in the of having collateral or letter of credit. Where basically all of our revenue goes in this lockbox. The operating expenses are paid, the uh obligations on debt are paid and then the residual comes back to us. So that that's the 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 folks who who we have contracts with and whatnot know they're going to be at the head of the line before we get the money. They 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 have their access to the money as well. So it's kind of a unique arrangement with CCAs. Well, we have sort of the, we we longer term would very much like to do what some of the other CCAs have been able to do as they've matured. And that is to get a credit rating. It's it's hard to to do projects, it's hard to do borrowing. We do have capability of doing taxing and financing, which is a very attractive interest rate. If we wanted to do small local projects or things like that, but you you have to prove yourself first. And the CCAs went for probably, I guess, fifteen years before they were able to even get a a credit rating at all. And now there's four or five of them that in the state that have done that. We're a ways away from that, but that's got to be one of our goals. So we become a a good financial partner in the in the finance community. So so we're looking forward to getting the CFO on on board so we can embark on on these kinds of activities going forward. So with that, that hopefully you you you, we haven't, we 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 kept you informed and entertained as we've gone along. I think hopefully my goals were realized that we got all the things done. hopefully my goals were realized that we got all the things done, letting you see the staff, giving you some insights into where we're going. It's kind of interesting what's on the inside of this black box and we're certainly transparent. We 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 you can tell, I think, the whole staff loves what they do. So it's they love to talk about it. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I think I'll turn it back over to you and hopefully it's been time well spent.
Yeah, no, this is this has been great. I I didn't necessarily expect that it would go this long, but I I I thought that this was great. It's it's actually very exciting information. And together with launch on Monday, it's it's really exciting and, you know, I'm looking forward to all of these conversations, office space, the strategic planning, the the regulatory and legislative priorities and goals. I think that this is just really very fascinating stuff. I'm going to get a Director Baber who has his hand up and and
Hey, Bill, can you hear me?
Yes.
You said that we all have different skill sets that we add to the mix, right?
Yes.
So can I give you some constructive suggestion?
Sure.
You probably don't know this, but for five years in the city of San Diego, I ran the docket. So I probably docketed five hundred, six hundred meetings, okay?
Yes.
This presentation is sort of buried in the agenda under the traditional spot of reports where you normally put just ministerial items. This is really wasn't a really a ministerial discussion. This was a broad discussion of everything we're doing with all our staff with a large PowerPoint. And wherever go, which is a great discussion. So highlight that. Don't just bury it in report, put action item, where, you know, where we're going with the rollout. You know, presentation from Sebastian, presentation from Cody. So the public knows, wow, we're going to see where we're going here. It's like you bear, you have this wonderful piece here and you sort of buried it in the docket. So if we're going to tell the world where we're going, tell them in the do- tell them in the in the agenda, just a suggestion, okay?
Thank you. Boy, well taken.
Okay.
Any other comments for our staff? Anything having to do with this presentation? Do we have any public comments on on this item? Kimberly, did we receive any public comments? Or is there anyone listening that would like to comment on this item?
We have not received any public comments.
All right, well, I'll take it back to the 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 board. This has been great. I'm I'm excited. I'm very thankful for all of our staff members. And then the new ones, the the ones that have been with us, like Cody, since the very beginning. And thank you guys for for doing, I I think you guys have been doing the 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 tour of all of our member cities and going out to all the city councils and presenting. So you guys have been working really, really hard lately, well, for a while, but as of late, it's been really crazy busy for you guys. So thank you from the bottom of my heart, everything that you're doing and and we're looking forward to to launch on Monday, too. All right. Well, this is a receiving file, so then we'll go to the next item, which is committee reports. Do we have anything to report from any of the committees?
If I may, Chair, we have one report from the Community Advisory Committee. Chair Price was absent at the last meeting and so Vice Chair Hammond chaired the meeting. So I believe she's on now and can give the brief report on behalf of the CAC.
Thank you, Sebastian. Good evening, Chair Moskyn, Directors Tara Hammond, she her hers, Vice Chair of SDCP CAC. And I'd like to formally welcome Director De De Dina. I'm excited for you to be involved. So the meeting was two weeks ago. It was a short and sweet meeting. Members gave general updates on what each of us have been doing in our respective cities for outreach and education relating to San Diego community power. And all of us are very eager and excited to help continue educating the community and doing outreach this year. We formed an ad hoc committee, which is drafting our twenty twenty one work plan and we will be working on that and presenting it to you in the next several weeks. And that was the bulk of what we did. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Tara, the good representative of Insanitas?
All right. Well, I will say we all are very, very excited for the launch on Monday and I'll see you guys there virtually.
Thank you, Tara. All right. Do we have any any other committee reports?
No other commuter reports, Chair.
All right, then we'll move to director comments. Are there any comments by my colleagues? Bill, do you have anything to report? Or Ryan, do you have anything to report?
No, I I think I said more than enough.
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Is that essentially what Bill Baber was saying? No joke, and Bill. All right.
I was saying he has so much wonderful things to say. Let's tell the public. You need a better PR approach, Bill, because you're awesome.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you.
All right, well, then if there's no other, nothing else, I will see, see you guys on Monday and we are adjourned. All right, have a nice evening.
Hi, everybody.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Bye. Have a nice night.